I'm going to call our regular Board of Education meeting to order at 7:09 PM. If we could all please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, before we get started, I just want to welcome everyone to our second Zoom Board of Education meeting, and our first one went fairly well, and we're hoping this one does the same. Just some notes that if we have a board member who happens to get thrown out of the internet or what have you, we will stop and wait for that board member to get back into the meeting so that we can keep going. We will have our public comment, but rather than how we normally do public comment, regular board meeting, there's a podium where you can put your name and phone number if you have a question that needs to be answered. What we'll do here is if you have a public comment, you want a question answered, you can send your telephone number to me via email at mtealto@richmond.k12.mi.us, and we will get back with you. And before we get started, I would just like to say a few words on behalf of the Board of Education. I want to thank all of those staff members who have stepped up in areas other than their regular jobs and have helped us feed so many families in our community, helped us to follow the executive order, and continue to enable us to maintain our funding. We also want to acknowledge our spring coaches who came in to help our families get their lockers, their families to help get their stuff out of their children's lockers. Again, this is another way that our staff has stepped up to do a job other than what they normally collect their paycheck for. To our teachers, administrators, secretaries, and administrative office staff, we thank you for all of your work and commitment to keeping our students educated throughout this crisis. To Brian Wamsley, Tammy Chad, our entire administrative team, we thank you for all the work that you are doing on our bond project. This is a crucial component to the future success of our district, and we appreciate the work you are doing. And finally, to Eric Lamont and his staff Keith and Harold, we thank you for all the work you're doing. We would not be able to get work for our students online, and we would not be able to conduct our business through Zoom meetings. The work you're doing in our IT department is invaluable. We thank you. So now I'm going to move on to our mission statement. Chris?
All right. At Richmond Community Schools, we provide a quality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community. I will move on to the roll call. Margaret?
Here.
Jessica?
Here.
Kyle is late with notice. Sandra?
Here.
Angie?
Here.
And Sheri?
Here.
We have a quorum. I am here as well.
Thank you. Next, I am looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Was Sheri, was that you that supported?
Jessica and I.
Okay, we're going to go with Sheri. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next is our bond update. Mr. Wamsley?
Hey, well, good evening. Just to give you an update of where we are with the bond projects, we actually have a meeting tomorrow, so I will get a better update on some of the potentials with the shutdown that we've experienced in the state and how that's affected our project. As of the last meeting, though, we do not anticipate, we anticipate all of our projects to be completed on time that were expected in August. For the elementary, we are in the final stages of the details from the perspective of carpet samples, tiles, ceiling tiles, all the logistics, and so forth. So that bid package will actually be going out in a couple of weeks. So I believe at our next meeting, the eleventh, we had talked about, or at some future meeting there, going over all the details of the bond for the elementary, so that when you get all the bid packages in. Kyle, give me a second, sorry.
Yeah, would you unmute Kyle? Okay. Kyle, are you good? Can you hear us?
Yeah, my apologies. I apologize to everyone, yes, thank you.
Yep, we're on the band update.
So the next board meeting should be more of a detail on all the elementary. Everything that we planned in the bond so far is still within the budget, with the exception of, we did plan for air conditioning in the buildings because we were replacing the unit ventilators that were on the gym, the cafeteria, the office, media center, and those were in the bond specs to be replaced with a heating and cooling unit. The unit ventilators that we put in in the 2014 bond can be retrofitted to be able to have cooling in the classrooms, so that's the big problem, or the biggest issue that we're in the elementary school. But otherwise, it's moving full speed ahead. The middle school and high school, we have been kind of going back and forth with the drawings, looking at them with the architect. The gym addition, I should have, obviously, at the next board meeting, I will have that ready for the first go around in terms of the scope. What happens after the drawings is it goes to the architect, or to the construction manager, and they price it out. They actually look at, is it going to be within the scope of the bond application? So in the middle school, we have the renovation of the office, the secure entrance, the art room renovation, there's some additional classrooms near the media center where the old office area is, and so forth. And then the high school, obviously, the main addition is the auxiliary gym and the weight room that's attached to it. I think so far, the drawings have been looking pretty impressive, so we're still working through that. As far as the turf project, it's been awarded. I should have an answer tomorrow, when they will officially start, because they are going to be a little behind because of the project that they were supposed to finish. But we had built into the schedule that they would be done early enough in August that we would be ready for the first home football game. So our anticipation is we will still be on track for that. That's an update of where we are with the bond.
Any questions, anybody? Brian, just going back to when you were talking about the air conditioning, is it an issue that can't be overcome?
No, because what we're looking at is as projects are coming in under budget, we're going to take that allocation to for the next project. So for instance, and I don't remember off the top of my head, but the turf project that we talked about at the last board meeting was under budget, the toll project, so those dollars, assuming that there's nothing, no surprises, I should say, and we pretty much know what's going to be under that turf and whether any repairs have to be, those monies will be moved to the next project.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we're going to move on to superintendent legislative update. Mr. Wamsley?
Okay, before I introduce the principals, to give us an update, you know, a quick update on what's been going on, I'll just give you a couple of updates. Board members, if you have not gotten in the mail, if you'd let us know, the MISD budget for FY 2020, Jamie and I, actually, Jamie mailed it out to you last week. It will be uploaded to the website. They are not doing a presentation this year. Like in previous years, we'd send a delegate to the ISD, and they would listen to the budget presentation. They're not doing that this year. So the budget, if you have questions, if you can let me know, I will get them to the ISD so we have the answers before, because you'd have to, we have to have it voted on before June 1st. We only have one meeting in May, so the action item would be to either approve or not approve the MISD's budget on the May 11th board meeting.
Mr. Wamsley, can you unmute Mrs. Bertal, please? Somehow she got muted.
Sorry. Sorry.
All right, thank you.
There you go.
Sorry.
No problems.
So then you want us to look over and send you any questions, but we need to be prepared to vote on the budget on May 11th?
Correct. And if someone has a question, I will get the answer from the ISD if I can't answer it, and I will obviously make sure all seven board members have it, and I can reiterate it at the board meeting on the 11th.
Did everyone get their packet?
Yes.
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 Okay. Thank you, Jamie.
The second, I'd like to give a quick shout out to Heather Yelnitch, AC Williams, and Jamie Miller. I was driving to the various buildings today, and there were 12 baby ducklings that had fallen into the sewage, the stormwater drain, and they took it upon themselves to save the 12 baby ducklings. The little mother, the mother was frantically going around and around while they were working, but they saved the ducklings, so it was just happy ending to the story. Shout out to Mrs. Barrett's third grade student, Lane Mueller. She is expected to be on Channel 7's morning newscast tomorrow at 6:40 AM, where she's going to be talking about remote learning. So if you're up early, 6:40 is when it's projected to be on, so I know Mr. Kosh and I said, I think he's going to tape it, but I should be hopefully up by that time. Just a shout out to Mr. Ogilvy, too. You know, with everything that's happened with the class of 2020, this year's graduates, and really all the kids, but you know, all the memories you have as a graduate, your final year with prom and with ceremonies and so forth, and with people's economic situations, we have some families that are just, they're prioritizing their expenses. And so he put a call out to anybody interested in sponsoring a senior for, to get a diploma. And so we were able, I should say, he was able to coordinate, make sure every senior this year will have their high school yearbook for them. And what's unique about Richmond, and I think it's pretty special, is it encapsulates the entire year, and so the kids get them in the fall, where most school districts will stop it at a certain point in the school year, and then the last part is missed out. So kudos to Mr. Ogilvy for putting that out there and coordinating that. Quite a bit of accomplishment, so. This would have been, with Earth Day this month, we would have been celebrating our green schools. Just a shout out to Lee Elementary School, who received evergreen status, which are three status, two, the green, evergreen, and, excuse me, green, emerald, and evergreen. Lee received evergreen status, which is the top category in the elementary. Middle school received emerald status, so that they were the highest ones in the county. And then the Richmond High School, which is the newest of our green school, did receive green status, so they all have been recognized. So I want to compliment them and the staff for all the hard work that they're doing for that. Mr. Castle and I have been working on a letter of how we're going to recognize the top 10 at our May 11th board meeting. Normally, when we have them come up to a board meeting, we recognize them, say a few words about them, their accomplishment, and then we ask the moms or dads or guardians to put the medallions over the student's neck. So we have coordinated, we're in the coordinating. Mr. Castle, I believe they went out, the letters went out today to the top 10, and we will be sending the medallion medals to the families so they can participate with us.
Oh, very good.
We will do a recognition of each graduate, and then allow the parents at home, hopefully they'll be able to have the technology, to be able to put the medallion on their students for the accomplishments they well deserve. I'm going to turn it over at this point to the building principals, just to say some few brief words of how our continuity of learning plans are going. This is the beginning of our second week. When I look at the calendar here, what are we, on the eighth day here of the official different format of learning that we were doing prior to the spring break? So can I start with you, Mr. Kosh? And let me find, I think you're on mute, too. Can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Nice seeing everybody. Nice, no, being at home and seeing everybody's little sneak peek. But at the elementary for continuity plan, what's making it go so well is all the planning that was done beforehand with all the administrative team, but then we also had school improvement teams from each school. I know, for example, the elementary, that included someone from every grade level, the specials, special education title. So we had that leadership team met at the first time, so they kind of took the lead on the district continuity plan, so they had a good understanding of it. They shared that with their fellow grade levels. Also, with input from the union, with Teresa and Tim, really helped us look at all different aspects, since this is new to everyone, not only in Richmond but in the entire state. So just having all the stakeholders really helped out as we started laying the groundwork. Like I said, this was new to everybody. And then once we had the district plan, able to send it out to all the staff at the elementary. And then on April 14th, we had grade level. So we met with every grade level on Tuesday because we wanted the plan for each individual to be done by Friday, so we want to give them a lot of planning time, time that they can meet with Heidi, Mrs. Manguni, and myself during Zoom meetings, and also talk with their teammates. So our focus at the elementary is we want the real team concept. So kindergarten work together, first grade, second grade, and third grade, and the specials work together on theirs. Now, we also had special education title with all the other grade levels, so they can offer their support and their ideas for the plan also. So since the plan has been in place, all parents have been, received copies of the individual teacher plans, the grade level plans, so we're able to move forward with that. In the week and a half that we've been doing this, I'm happy to say that I would easily say that close to 100% of the students are participating. We have some students who teachers weren't able to reach out to through various methods, and you know, we even had teachers who had mailed out letters, the old fashioned way, to students just because they weren't reaching them any other way, and that did prove to be pretty successful that way also. But we've had our social worker Samantha Perry, she's reached out to families also just for additional support, so she was able to reach some families also through some of her modes of communication. So parents have been getting a lot of information, and now that the plan is in place and we're working through it now, how do we support the parents and support the students? You know, at the elementary, parents are doing most of the work, or the legwork, getting students working and helping them with it. So we're, that's kind of what we're working through now, is how the best serve the parents is their supporting their students. So some things that we've heard, some parents want more paper packets. They don't want their younger students in front of the screen as much. So teachers are kind of accommodating and trying to differentiate for students, because not every student needs the exact same type of learning, so we're trying to do all the different modes of media that we can have, whether it's digital or whether it's on paper. So teachers have been doing a nice job, really looking at their individual students to differentiate what's the best learning. To follow up, now they were kind of have this emotion, and some teachers are emailing every day, calling us every day, just asking some questions. So now we set up kind of a schedule, so starting on this Wednesday, we're meeting with kindergarten first grade in the Zoom meeting, and then on Thursday, we're meeting with second grade, third grade, and specials, no one's can, special education title, social worker, they're all going to join the grade level, so they can offer their support also. And then every day, teachers are emailing me with just updates, student work, parents are sending, and just kind of give us an update every day. So Monday, kindergarten checks in, Tuesday's first grade, Wednesday, second grade, Thursday's third grade, and then Friday, special, special education title, kind of do a weekly checking just so we can see the student work that they're doing. So at this point, no, everything's going well. One unique thing, we did have some kindergarten first and second grade students who didn't have devices at home. So as we mentioned, the IT department doing some work, so they helped distribute, I'd say we probably distributed about 15 laptops to those students who didn't have any devices at home. So once again, just trying to give them all the resources that we can. And now when we have our meetings, our Zoom meetings this week, we're going to really know, talk about what some of the feedback is from parents and what we need to do to continue to support the student learning at home.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Kosh? No? All right, thank you. Keep up the good work, please.
I don't have any questions, but I do want to say my son's in first grade, and everything is going really smooth. The teachers are doing a great job with their communication, and it's been really good, so thank you.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Bertals from the middle school?
Yes, before I start, though, I'm a little bummed to hear about those ducks, because it's been, that's the third year in a row now that we've had to do that. In the first two, just real quick, I was a part of one with Mrs. Crampton in the fire department, and then the other one was Tammy Gangle, who had to go down and grab those ducks. So it was in the morning, we had to stop traffic. So if it's the same mother, she needs to learn. With that being said, we followed a similar format that the elementary did with creating the district plan. Once we got that district plan, Anthony and I met with the teachers via video conferencing and laid out the groundwork for that, and then really threw it in their lap on how they were going to execute that plan and go back and forth with their colleagues, and then back and forth with us. Mr. Burke, mine, I believe that we have a good plan, that when it's all said and done, will be viewed as a great plan, because we evolve and learn each and every day that we work through this plan, and so have our teachers. The dedication and flexibility to meet the needs of not only the students but the parents has been remarkable. Our staff is, as you know, is extremely passionate and dedicated. They take great pride in establishing positive relationships with their students and families. I think they're very good at reading student body language when they're going over lessons for understanding and different body language that help educate the whole child besides the content, teaching, listening skills, the 21st century soft skills that aren't part of the content, so on and so forth. But that makes it tough for our teachers when it's in your blood to want to make those contacts and that contact every single day and see them in front of you, and when that's who you are. It does work on you mentally, but our staff, as bummed out as they are in missing their kids, have done a great job of trying to do all of that, but in a different manner and the best they can. So we've been extremely impressed with what they're doing. With that being said, parents and teachers both have household demands that also throws a unique challenge into the learning and teaching process at home. And our teachers, I believe, have done a great job of, when they've communicated with parents, just kind of, I don't want to say calming them down, but letting them know it's all right, do what you can, get to it when you can. I've read a lot of research in the last couple of weeks and articles about, you know, family, you know, conflict and fighting with your kids to do their homework, and, you know, when's the right time, and when's the right time to back off? And it's definitely a unique challenge that's been thrown at a lot of people in a relatively quick amount of time. Our plan, we communicated to all the students via email, and sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, we're trying to lean on the students, but with a follow-up to the parents. Fourth and fifth grade, most of the communication has been through the parents, also with the students, because we're trying to get them independent, but it's been a lot more with the parents. With sixth and seventh and eighth graders, where we followed up with the communication, those that said, well, we want to send us the stuff as well, so I can hold my kid accountable, they're being put on our lists and our teacher lists. So the teachers are definitely doing a nice job with that. One thing that's been pretty impressive is the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, because it's unique, fourth and fifth kind of lends itself a little easier. Fourth, you know, you have two classes, so you're going to see 50 kids, fourth grade yourself contained, so you see your 23, 24 kids, however many. So it's easier to keep track of what they're being engaged in, what they're participating in, but our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade teams have worked together and created Excel spreadsheets and OneDrive where they can share with each other who is participating and what, so teachers will see, hey, they might not be participating in my class right now, I am going to send them a reminder, but it's good to see that they're doing X, Y, and Z in another classroom, because we want to make sure that they're engaged in something. And then those that aren't engaged at all, we're reaching out to parents, and when there isn't a contact there, then Mr. Burke Meyer and I are going to follow up with those parents just to see. We respect everyone's decisions and what they're going to do for the next eight weeks, but we just want to make sure that everybody's aware and knowledgeable in what's going on. Weekly, teachers are sending an email to the students, those parents that want, fourth and fifth grade, it's mainly to the parents and to the students. They're sending assignments with those weekly emails, they're doing check-ins weekly. We're using Zoom and Team. We are Microsoft district, so every student has the Teams app, or maybe they might not have the app, but they have the ability of Teams because it's built into Office 365 to video conference. So teachers have emailed their video conferencing for the rest of the year, they're using it to instruct, to tutor, for class discussions, answering questions, so on and so forth. So for example, if I'm Mrs. Valesby, I might have my office hours every Wednesday and Thursday from 10 to 12 for the rest of the year, and it shows up in the student's Outlook Calendar.
Right.
All they have to do is go on that Outlook Calendar and click on it, and they can join that meeting at that time if they want to, if there's some tutoring or help they need, they can join that discussion. And that's not the only method, but that's just an example. They're using Khan Academy, MobiMax, Discovery Ed to help deliver some of the content along with packets. I was kind of surprised, we sent well over 400 packets, paper copies to parents. We have several that have the ability to go online, but like me, I still have an old fashioned planner, I like to write everything down, I like to keep it right in front of me. We have several that want the packets, and I understand it, and even though they have the online. The one thing that, and then when I say we need to improve, the one thing we need to improve over is the packets are a supplement to what's online, some confusion. You don't have to do both, you can certainly do both, a little extra practice wouldn't hurt you, but you can do both. We're staying within the guidelines of the, that was in the letter that Mr. Wamsley sent out, you know, two hours to three hours a day, an hour for the younger kids, a half hour on the low end. We're also using Schoolology. Also, a nice thing in Teams is you can post questions and different information in Teams that every single student gets, and then they can have discussions. You can say, okay, you know, I want you to read this or answer this question, you could send it out today and have it due Friday, and then you could get on and go back and forth, it's a discussion site. Let me see what else I got here. I talked about the Excel tracking participation, we're also tracking participation in Power School, so parents can go online and see if their kids are turning in their assignments. I talked about packets. Mr. Burke Meyer and I are having weekly meetings to check in with teachers, check in on their mental well-being as well, because again, like I said, when you're a, you go into this business because you're a people person, and it's in your blood to make a difference, and sitting behind a computer interacting, it's the best we can do, but it's hard to read that body language, you know, it's hard to talk to the, you know, the kid one-on-one, you know, phone calls easy, but, so they're, this isn't easy for them, certainly not a vacation, so we're checking in with them and seeing how we can support them. I think it's going good, learning, we're learning as we go, we're going to strive to get better each and every day and each week. This is a substantial Um, this is a substantial change for not only a teacher, but also parent.
Right.
And I think with all change over time, when it becomes comfortable, the stress will be lowered. And that's our goal. We don't, we don't want anybody to be stressed out. And we're hoping to look back at this as just a little blip on our radar and that we never have to do it again. Uh, but if we do, I think we'll be, we'll go from good to great.
Good. Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Um, Mr. Bartels, I have two. Just the, the locker cleanout, just how did that go? You know, parents having to come and pull up. I heard good things, but just if you can just talk.
Yeah, from what I heard, from what I heard, it was really good things. Um, we, we have, um, before that, we had tried to accommodate, um, people that week that couldn't come, that could come the next day and so on and so forth. Um, I would say probably seventy-five percent of the stuff is picked up. So, I mean, it went pretty good. Um, I talked to Ms. Martha and, um, John, who kind of ran it in our building and they had one heck of a system to limit contact and, um, exposure and there were a few mess-ups, you know, where you forgot a bag here or there. Um, but I, I don't know if, if this is funny or not, but if, if you had something sitting in your locker for four months and it, or, I mean, four weeks, it, it hasn't been that essential. So you can miss it for another day or two to come get it. So we did make mistakes, but, um, everybody will get their stuff.
Good.
I can just say the one thing that Dar and the custodians have said is, um, there was a lot of stuff in some of the kids' lockers. Um, they had multiple bags that they were filling, um, to be picked up, so.
And you know, you know, kudos to the custodians. They've been doing a great job, but I, I will say this, you know, you never want this to happen, but I see smiles on their faces because those lockers in June are pig, are pig size. So they go in right now, get her done and, uh, you know, they're done. Now they can wipe them down, clean them and we're ready to go. They're rolling comms already. So they're doing a nice job.
Right. Um, just one more question, Mr. Bartels, and I don't, it's not necessarily how the, um, rollout has been, but it's just a question because it's the end of the year thing. Before we went into crisis mode, you, you got, you were talking about, um, our kids were getting their schedules ready for next year. Did that process all get done and is everybody ready to go for next year?
We had, uh, which isn't bad, out of the, um, you know, five hundred and sixty kids-ish, um, we only had about seventy that never turned their form in. So Mrs. May emailed them two weeks ago. I followed up with an email early last week to not only the student and the parent. The, the deadline was actually today at four o'clock, otherwise we were going to schedule without it.
Okay.
I was, at the last I heard, over fifty percent of them were emailing Mrs. May. Uh, so that should be all done in the computer this week and we're actually talking to Mr. Wamsley tomorrow about scheduling.
And then, but students, the, the normal process, they do this, Mr. Bartels, but they don't get their schedule notification, what their class is until August anyways, correct? Is that right?
Right. We usually, yeah, we, we play it, yeah, we play it both ways, you know, with, either you mail it out or you wait till that night. Depends on what the issue is and how much you want, need to communicate. You know, it's usually a Blue Devil thing, Blue Devil days.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Castle with the high school.
Well, it seems like Dave and Keith get together and try to conspire to take all of my steam out of my presentations every time, but, uh, we'll try to cover some stuff that they didn't cover already. At the high school, it has really been a team effort since day one. School Improvement Team had, we've met several, two or three times to try to come up with plans to see what we could do to best service the kids. We met multiple times over spring break and I know it wasn't a traditional spring break, but, uh, many of the high school staff got up early, stayed up late to try to accommodate everyone's times because there's a lot of, uh, different schedules going on. And we got a lot of great input as to how to best serve our kids. So we've developed a hybrid plan based on the best way to fill in the gaps for our kids over the last month and a half. Really, there's, uh, the online, but there's also the traditional, uh, pen and paper for the kids that don't have the online option. We've really made a seamless transition from providing review materials to introducing new materials. Because one of the, the big keys that we've been trying to stress to the students is we may have this last, uh, month and month and a half off, but when we return next fall, you're going to be expected to pick up and you, and we don't have the time to sit down and review for eight weeks. We got to be able to hit the ground running. So this high school staff has done a great job on being able to both, uh, go back and loop and review over previous material as well as to start to reintroduce that new material and try to bridge that gap. So that when our underclassmen come back next year, that they're ready to hit that ground running. Um, they're doing video conferences. They're doing, all high school teachers have office hours, kind of college professor style, where all their kids, they have this block time during the week and if you go ahead and you get online, whether it's a conference call or an online platform on Zoom or Team, um, you have that ability to reach your teacher one-on-one, not in a small group every week. Um, the, the staff in the high school really thought it was important to spend the first few deep, first few days to do welfare checks on our kids. Um, unique because we have the oldest kids and sometimes it's seen the toughest, but some of our high school kids need the, the biggest hug, you know, metaphorically, especially the senior class who has gone from going into what they thought was going to be the the celebration of the last couple of weeks into, you know, some unknown things here. So the teachers and the, the staff and the high school support staff, uh, Mrs. Laritanda in Mississippi, that have done just an awesome job as well, and Mrs. Borwick, Mr. Reinhardt, everyone in the building is doing their job and reaching out to our kids, whether it's, you know, through a phone call, whether it's a reminder one-on-one. We had a, a senior class Zoom meeting last week where we had over half the senior class get on and just, they're, they're just desperate to see each other. Everyone wanted just to say hello, to hear, hear the voices and see the faces. So besides the academics, the, the welfare checks are important. And we have welfare checks planned in and, and group Zoom calls for our underclassmen as well here coming up. Um, part of the other thing we've been doing is really important is making sure that we track those credits and the community service for the seniors because, you know, they're coming up on the last couple of weeks of their senior year and we need to make sure that they have met all their graduation requirements, um, you know, non-traditional, what this last couple of weeks may have been. We're doing everything we can, reaching out, uh, providing support, everything we can do to make sure that they have what they need to meet those credits. Um, we have staff meetings planned in the middle of each week where we're going to get together and staff are going to share their successes and then some of the, the troubles they've encountered. Because, you know, online, like Mr. Bartels just kind of said, that everyone's kind of on their own island. They, they don't have the ability to talk between classes like staff usually do or talk after school or before school. So we think it's really important that we have the ability to sit down every week and kind of collaborate and say, hey, this was, you know, this worked for me. This was awesome. Wow, I tried this and this really bombed. You should probably stay away from that. So we can share those successes every week and those are on Wednesdays and Thursdays. Um, the, the high school has been really great in understanding that this is not a static situation and what may work and what may be, what we may be doing right now may not be what works a week from now and may not be what we're doing a week from now. Because this is truly the unknown and, and the first and like Mr. Bartel said, hopefully the last time that we ever have to do this. But we have been just blessed by a staff that is willing to do whatever it takes to provide that support for the kids. So right now, we're really just trying to focus on, on celebrating the senior class and, and getting them all across the metaphorical or literal stage here, one way or another, and then, um, focusing on bridging that gap for the, our underclassmen.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Castle?
I have a, um, a question. Um, well, not just for Mr. Castle, but, um, Mr. Bartels mentioned that, uh, they are still updating and using Power School. Are the other buildings doing that as well?
I can speak for the high school. We are as well too. Um, if our parents log into the Power School portal, they will see uh, whether or not the student turned in the assignment and then they're getting some feedback right now. Um, so it may not be, you know, it's not the same as before, but there's a, a space in the Power School where they can add the comments. So if a, a student turned in an assignment, they're going to get some type of feedback as well. And additionally, they may get some type of comment for them.
Okay. And do we know, like, do we have an idea for each building, like, a percentage of how many of the students and parents have been contacted successfully? Like, do we know if there's anybody out there that hasn't been?
Again, I can speak for the high school. Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
No, age before beauty, Mr. Bartel. Go ahead.
Um, we, um, we teach our kids how to, how to go online. Now, it's funny that some of them, when, when they're sitting in front of their parents have amnesia, but they, uh, we go over it, um, with the students um, at boot camp and then we do it throughout the year where we do our two-week check-ins where they're, they're supposed to be monitoring their own progress throughout the year. So students have their own, um, login access and usernames and passwords. Um, we can, um, check to see who has and who hasn't. Um, for, for students we can, but for parents, um, it, it's, they have to initiate it. Um, if, if parents, if parents do sign up for it, we can see how many times they logged on and so on and so forth. But if, if they don't choose to do it, then we can only see what the student has done.
Yeah, and I was just going to say that we're down to, we've been trying to narrow down, um, the, the, to try to identify which kids were not able to reach as, you know, as opposed to which kids don't want us to reach them for the high school kids, because some of the high school kids want to love and say that we can't get ahold of them. And, uh, so what we did is we spent a ton of time, Miss Borwick and myself, last week, calling home to the, a list of kids that our teachers told us they had not been able to get ahold of. And it was, um, pretty eye-opening. A, a lot of the parents were very shocked that, uh, their kids had been receiving lots and lots of emails and then we heard some, some pretty awkward conversations between parents and their kids in the background. And the next day, those kids were logged right back on, so things were pretty good. Uh, but we're down to just under a dozen kids right now that we haven't been able to, um, to have responses from, but, uh, Mrs. Laritanda and Mrs. Leepak reached out. And I think she said today we were down to under a few, three or four kids that we had not been able to make contact with. So we're doing great in high school.
Okay.
The follow, the follow-up real quick, Miss Fortuna, too, is, um, tomorrow, tomorrow will be the very fir-, due tomorrow is the first assignments that are due that have to be posted in Power School. So all of last week's work that was due, I don't know what each teacher's due date was, but our expectation is that every Tuesday by eight AM, that Power School is up to date. So everything that they've been collected should be posted in tomorrow. Now, students that don't, um, participate or do the assignments, the, the teacher is, just like if, if we were in session, the teacher's following up with them, hey, how come you didn't do this? Then they're going to follow up with the parent as well, um, from week, from week to week.
And Lee School doesn't use Power School, correct? He's, would you unmute Mr. Koshin?
All right. Thank you. I've just, uh, Power School Elementary does not use Power School on a regular basis. Um, so that, that hasn't changed at all. Um, what's unique at the elementary is, you know, the teacher has a classroom of twenty-five, twenty-six students. Um, so they have those, you know, relationships with the families also. Uh, so at this point, a hundred percent of the students have been contacted at the elementary. Um, teachers had to send a list of there's any students they can get ahold of and we only have about two or three stu-, uh, teachers who had a, a couple of students and then between the administrators and social worker reached out and just, uh, made sure that those, everything was okay and, uh, checked in with them. So, uh, we are good at the elementary.
Okay. Thank you. Good. Uh, Mr. Castle, uh, same two questions for you about the locker cleanout and whether all our, the scheduling is good to go at the high school, please.
So we'll start with the lockers. Uh, we had, I'd say, and this is just a rough percentage. I was going to say we had probably about sixty or sixty-five percent of the high school kids pick up their stuff. Um, we did a pretty thorough job that Thursday and Friday before we left of really telling the kids to, hey, if you've got anything and, and you need to take it, you should probably take it home right now. Um, at that point, we were really more concerned with anything that may spoil, like the leftover lunches some of our kids like to leave, but, uh, the, the kids did a great job of taking home a lot of their stuff before. Right now, our custodial staff has done an awesome job of getting everything out in the front lobby. So we've been going through and, uh, calling a lot of the parents that we saw that the kids still have their locker stuff. And again, it's been surprising how many, um, every morning I go in and check my voicemail and there's four or five calls from parents who say, my son swore he brought his computer home, or my daughter swore they brought this home, but it's in their locker. Can we come pick it up? So we've been having to accommodate probably half a dozen, you know, families and we're doing a great job of getting them in without, with minimal contact. But, uh, yeah, that front lobby is still significantly full. If anyone would like to come pick their stuff up, we'd love it.
Okay.
And then regarding the scheduling, uh, Miss Leepak got through, um, what we call round one as far as kind of a, a mock schedule and getting everything done. So, um, the, the thing with high school is we really have to make sure that the kids are completing their previous credits before, a lot of cla-, in a lot of classes before we promote them.
Sure. Okay.
Not to say it's easy in other cla-, in other schools, but they have the, uh, the ability to do that. So, um, we have a bunch of tentative plans, but a lot of them is based on the students completing their work and getting that credit for the classes that they're in now. So I have no doubt that, um, Miss Leepak is, is going to have this all set. She's going to work her tail off, so we really appreciate everything she's doing.
Hey, my last question, Mr. Castle. Um, just with, I know that you are, you are working with Mr. Wamsley and Miss Borwick with all the whole graduation stuff, but just kind of a question for those organizations that, um, have scholarships to give to students, are they getting some kind of notification on, you know, are they still interested in doing it? A deadline to get information in? Have you got to that point at all? I've had a couple of questions.
So, um, Miss Leepak would probably be better at answering that than me because she handles a lot of it, but I know that we've been getting a lot of scholarship applications turned in, even still. Um, I was writing recommendation letters for seniors, um, all weekend long. Well, there must have been a couple of scholarships that had due dates this weekend. So, um, I know she's been updating them on the school's website and making sure that, uh, seniors know that they're available. She's been sending out direct emails to the senior class when there become scholarships available and reminding them of the individual due dates. But as far as, go ahead, sorry.
No, I, I was asking those organizations that are giving the scholarships, what, have you got to the point of notifying them, you know, yes, we're still, you know, even though we're not having a normal end of the year staff, the, the organizations that have always given scholarships, have we done any reaching out to them? Yes, we're still doing it. If, if you're interested, we're looking to do it at whatever time. That's what I was asking. Have, made any contact with those groups?
Sorry, I misunderstood your question.
That's okay.
Yeah, um, that's been, it's all been done through Mrs. Tellt-, or, uh, not through Mrs. Telltow's office, through Mrs. Leepak's office. So, um, I could check with her tomorrow and I can get back to you, but yeah.
Okay.
She's been doing a great job of, of making contact and asking me questions, so I wouldn't hesitate to say she is.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I had a quick question about the volunteer hours. Do we have, um, any students that are not going to meet that? Is there any, um, you know, luxury from the governor in relationship to some students, maybe a percentage of hours not having to do?
We lose you, Mr. Castle? Well, I will jump in because it looks like he's frozen. Or he's still part of the deal. Um, we have a, just a handful of students that as of now are not yet at the forty. So what we've been doing is trying to tell uh, those that didn't reach the forty, we have been looking at those hours that they would have been scheduled to do something during the shutdown and allowing that to count because they weren't able to do it. So in other words, the week before spring break, when I was going to help the Lions Club do X, whatever that is, we're trying to accommodate, reach every student to make sure with this group that they, they've got their hour. We have, we have a lot of students that have well beyond the forty hours. Uh, we are down to, uh, you know, just was sent today from Mrs., uh, Borwick. I believe, let me, I'm, I'm going to mute you. Hang on, Mr. Castle. I believe Mrs. Borwick had about five or six kids on that list. That we are working specifically with those students, um, to see what we can do to get them, um, to reach that time.
And I don't know when you guys lost me, but, uh, it's, yeah, we're down to, I believe we have three, Mr. Wamsley.
Is it three? Okay.
Yeah, so, and we have full confidence that, uh, I, I don't care if I have to drive to their house and knock on their door from six feet away. We, we will get every single one of them.
That's great. Thank you.
A lot of the, a lot of the students had the sheets, but just never turned them in.
Right.
Oh, okay.
Castle and them have been doing, and that eliminated a lot of the kids right off the list. They had the sheets done and everything.
Yeah, and we've been, they're, they're probably the senior class and I don't know if Lexi can tell you, because she's probably one of the good ones, but, uh, I've been harassing them pretty much, um, three or four times a month saying, get the hours in, get the hours in, get the hours. So it's not a mystery.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
Uh, I just got a, a couple of things to finish up.
I just got a couple of things to finish up here on Mr. Castle said that we are we've been trying to figure out ways of little things of recognizing the class of 2020 within the limits that we have of the, you know, the governor's executive orders as well as the social distancing. The the we will be putting much like we do with the athletic signs when teams go to states and so forth. They actually just arrived today, signs across the once we know a student has completed the graduation requirement, we will have signs lined in front of the high school that will recognize our graduates. When we are talking about graduation and the the award ceremony, the convocation, it's it's still up in the air right now because we don't know what we can and can't do. We have had conversations, Mrs. Mr. Castle, Mrs. Borwick, Mrs. Lashbrook, regarding like a Plan B, we have what we got, we're probably on a Plan C right now.
Yeah, at least.
Our scheduled date is May 20. The odds of us being able to hold a ceremony on May 20 is basically none. The the Columbia Union College has canceled all events up through June, I believe it's June 19. We have a tentative date in June, but they're telling us, don't don't plan on that June date. So, we're trying to figure out as every district, what we do, you know, whether we can hold a if we can't do a ceremony, and it's again based on the regulations of what the state does, do we do a videographer and hold individual ceremonies and splice it all together? We are having those conversations right now to get a Plan B, but we really won't know anything until after the May 15th executive order is lifted and we see what the what we can and can't do with large groups. I really don't believe we're going to have large groups through at least July.
Right.
But so, we're gonna we're gonna figure out what to do to honor them. And the longer we get into summer, as they begin preparing for what their their plans are for the fall or post-high school, it's becoming gonna be more and more challenging to be able to get the students and parents involved because they will be really getting ready for the next phase of their life, whether that's a post-secondary high school, college, armed forces, whatever. I just wanted to give you an update. You know, there was the meal service program, and I want to tie it into there's been some recent news article that may not have been painted the district in a positive light in terms of my decision to redeploy staff. And part of that was because the 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 continuing continuity of learning planning that we're required has two pieces that we have to follow and and agree to. One is the that we're going to provide a food service and continue it. And the second is that in order to maintain pay, we are to redeploy staff to meaningful work, which has been very challenging because we don't want to make we don't want to put anybody in harm's way. So, following the executive order, following contract language, which allows redeployment of staff to other bargaining units, we did do that. The groups that we have, trying to minimize to no more than 10 in an area, for instance, the kitchen at a time, when we redeployed the teachers, we gave them a schedule. So, if they need to come into the building, they have a schedule block. So, there's no more than 10 teachers in the building. So, it was very intentional to make sure our staff was taken care of. I know there's a lot of nervousness. There's a lot of anxiety out there regarding COVID-19 and just the unknown. But I I do want to I do want to thank the staff for stepping up and helping us because here's these are the latest numbers. As of today, which is our fourth meal service, we have now distributed 13,944 meals to our families in since since spring break. Now, that's four deliveries that have eight and six meals in a package. But it takes a lot of time and energy to make 13,944 meals. And I I do want to really thank the the childcare preschool staff that were redeployed, the media specialists, the paraprofessors that are in the special ed department, Title I, the bus drivers who helped deliver the food, I want to make sure I don't forget anybody, and as well as the food service staff, they have done an incredible job with this undertaking. So, I do want to give them kudos for that. And the last thing as far as the legislative update, not much has happened. But I can talk to you, there is a concern or I don't know if concern is the right word, but there's conversation around Lansing regarding the school aid fund and this the general fund in general, about what dollars will be available next year. This weekend, I was listening to some of the news shows. One of them projected that the state of Michigan between the general fund and school aid would be $4 billion short. The latest I've heard is that the school aid fund, again, these are all until we get the official numbers from the state, I would say these are rumors, but they're they're projecting to be at least a billion dollars short to start the FY '21 fiscal year, which if you take a billion dollars divided by the number of kids that attend schools in the state of Michigan, that's about a $660 per pupil cut, which is some of the conversation we would have tonight in in our conversation. We really won't know details until the consensus revenue estimating revenue conference, which is held on May on May 15. That, we're going to really find two pieces of key pieces of information out. One is, though we've been told that we aren't getting a cut this year, will we truly not get a cut this year? And two, what are they talking for our per pupil allocation for next year? So, I know we're going to talk about the budget tonight as well as continue the conversation on May 11. Depending on that May 15 and how much we get through on those two days, my record age might be to have at least look at potentially a special board meeting or at least have a be ready to have a really final conversation on June 8 in order to approve the budget by June 22 or June 30. So, that's all I have for my update.
Okay, thank you. Moving on. Mr. Wamsley, if you'll unmute Lexi, please. We have our student board representative report and Lexi is joining us tonight.
All right, there you go, Lexi.
Got her?
She should be undone, yep.
Nope, she's muted.
Try this again.
There she is.
Muted me, but then I tried and then I muted myself. Or or yeah. So, I think pretty much everything that I was gonna say has kind of been stolen from me, but that's okay. So, I usually report on what's happening at all the schools, but obviously with all that's going on, the principals did a great job of that themselves. So, I actually reached out on Twitter and on Snapchat. I tried to get students' opinions about kind of all that's going on and whether they had any concerns that they wanted me to bring up at the board meeting. And majority of the concerns were already addressed by the board, which is great. Like, we were wondering about top 10 recognition and the senior awards ceremony and all of that's been addressed. So, that's really great to hear. And I think the only other things that were called to my attention were that Castle, Mr. Castle had the Zoom meeting where he invited all the seniors and he kind of talked about things that would be happening with the seniors in the future. And I know that a lot of seniors weren't able to tune into that meeting and there was vital information. So, people were wondering whether you could maybe put into a list or put all the information that was presented in that meeting and send it out to the seniors so that they don't miss anything that was important in that meeting if they weren't able to like tune into the Zoom.
Yep, Lex, we that's a great, great point. We didn't cover anything in that meeting that we didn't put on Facebook or in School Messenger. But you're but you're absolutely right. We want to if if anything, we want to over communicate. So, I'll make sure I review everything on the Zoom meeting. We're gonna try a different time of the day this week. So, maybe we can capture some more people. But good point. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
We miss you.
I'll let anybody who was concerned about that, I'll tell them that it's on Facebook. So, that's good to know. Thank you. And that was pretty much it. We I guess, speaking on behalf of the seniors, we just really want to thank everybody for trying to make this the best year that it can be with all that's going on. We really appreciated being able to go to the football fields when we were allowed to and watch the board countdown from 20 minutes and 20 seconds. I went there and I didn't expect it to be a big deal, but then once all the seniors started pulling up in their cars and we got on top of our cars and we're socially distancing, but still being able to communicate, that was really awesome. So, I know some people are wondering whether with some of the lifted restrictions, if we would maybe be able to do something like that again, or just I I mean, we're just dying to see each other again because we didn't realize that that was gonna be our last day. So, I think anything that could be done to maybe bring us together would be great. But we understand that the school is doing everything that they can to accommodate us and to make the school year just the best that it can be. So, that's pretty much all I had to report.
Sure, Lex, you know what? That was Mr. Reinhardt's baby there. That was his brainstorm, and I really want to give him credit for that. So, I'll check with him when I see him tomorrow. But the feeling is mutual. We absolutely miss all of you guys as much as you miss us.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, Lexi. It's so good to see your face and and to hear your voice. I'm glad you could be part of the meeting tonight.
I'll invite anything that gives a sense of normalcy.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Okay, moving on. Next is a portion of our meeting for public comment. If there's anyone who would like to address the board, they may do so. You have three minutes to speak as usual. It's not a question and answer period. But if you do have a question you need answered, as I stated in the beginning of the meeting, you can send an email to me with your telephone number and someone can get back with you. Is there anyone who would like to address the board?
I'm gonna unmute everybody.
You are unmuting everybody, Mr. Wamsley?
Somebody's unmuted. So, if someone wants to talk, they can unmute. Some people have been muted themselves. So, I have unmuted everybody on my end. And anybody that would like to talk.
I would like to speak, but I'm trying to figure out how to get my face back on here. This is Lisa. Can you help me real quick, Kyler? This is Kyler's mom. Hello, everyone. Just real quickly, wanted to brief you guys on something that we have going. On behalf of some senior parents and Project Graduation, sorry, when I first sat down here, it wasn't dark. Brian is aware of this because we have been in contact with him. But if any of you have seen on social media, a lot of the cities and villages in Michigan have put up banners recognizing the class of 2020. We are in works with the city of Richmond. It's on the agenda for May 1 to try to get this project approved in Richmond. And we just want to let you know, guys know that this was in the works. As far as the light posts, and we're not sure if the banners will be like back to back or one student on one side, another student on the other. We hope that you guys will support this as far as just give us your approval. We are looking for donations if that is all possible as far as school affiliated organizations, boosters, groups, anything like that. And then, of course, any civic organizations in our community. We're excited about this. The village seems very excited. I'm sorry, city of Richmond seems very excited about this. I know this isn't a question and answer portion, but are you guys aware of what I'm referring to? Have you seen things like this? Like, it started with the village of Casville. From there, I know Elginak is doing it. I'm not sure who else I've seen in our immediate area. Further north of us, Cass City, Michigan is doing it. Carroll, Michigan is doing it. A lot of the cities, school districts, villages, they're all approaching it in different ways. Some schools are helping to pay for it. Not suggesting that that's what we're looking for. Any donations would be greatly appreciated. We're trying to take the financial burden, keep the financial burden off the parents. Project Graduation at this point is still hoping to have some sort of a party before the summer is over for these kids. So, they're not ready to part with that money to donate at all to this cause. However, that's a possibility, part some money. We have tons of parents that want to donate and sponsor kids. Anyways, we're really excited about it. And it sounds like the city of Richmond is as well. So, thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else? Looks like no. Okay.
So, let me mute everybody and then go unmute the board.
Okay.
Okay, I believe all the board members were unmuted, yes.
Okay, moving on. Items of interest from members of the board. Does anybody have anything?
Actually, I have something I would like to share. Today, I was able to watch a webinar that was hosted by MS MASP. And they actually were able to talk to, I think I'm saying this right, Bethany Wickstall and Beth Bullion of the state budgets budget office. It was about an hour-long meeting. It was extremely informative. It had quite a few information, quite a few information regarding the executive order and guidelines, you know, and how to go along with that and all the questions. And it was very interesting to see that many things are still not finalized. A lot of things are still up in the air. But they did say that we should prepare for the best and the worst as far as budget goes. And like Mr. Wamsley said earlier, that maybe to not make a final decision until after we get more information in May 15. But as of now, Bethany Wickstall, I think she was the one that actually went over the education portion of the state budget. And she mentioned that we should probably account for maybe a 345 per pupil reduction in worst case scenario just to be on the safe side. And there was also the meeting will be posted for anybody that would like to maybe see it tomorrow. And she also shared the PowerPoint presentation was emailed to me if any board members would like me to forward it to them if they're interested in checking it out. But they plan on offering other webinars for us to join. So, it was pretty interesting. And I look forward to maybe the next one. And maybe some of you would be interested in looking at it, too. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we are going to move on to our action items. The first one is approval of soil removal and relocation. This was discussed at our last board meeting. So, there is a sample resolution if someone would like to make it.
I can do it.
To accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the authorization for soil removal and relocation from the football soccer field as well as the improvements to the practice field by Midwest Landscape Group Incorporated, burn amount not to exceed $257,336 as outlined in the attached documentation.
There's there's still more to the motion, I believe.
Oh, I am so sorry. I thought that was the attached documentation. The contract to Midwest Landscape Group Incorporated will be issued through the construction manager of construction. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualifications of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which the funding from the 2020 school building and site bond series one is authorized.
Kyle, I'll say you that supported it.
I'm still gonna support it.
All right, thank you. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Chris?
Hi.
Kyle?
Hi.
Angela?
Hi.
Sherry?
Hi.
Jessica?
Hi.
Sandy?
Hi.
I vote aye, motion carries. Next item is approval of school bus purchase. Mr. Wamsley, is this you want to speak to this first?
The in the bond application, there is a line item. The, um, in the bond application, there is a line item to purchase five buses over the course of the bond. Uh, in series one, I believe it is, uh, three buses and in series two, there's two more. Uh, but there's a total of five. Um, so we currently have two that are at risk of, um, what, what is called being red flagged, uh, or not being able to allow it to be driven on the roads. By ordering them now, we anticipate receiving these not until October. That's the timeline for getting buses. So, um, we have two that we need to replace and these are, um, these are not buses that were from the 13 bond. These are buses that were prior to the 13 bond. So they are well over the, uh, the 10-year, um, life expectancy or. Um, you can see in the backup here, Mrs. Dobbs, uh, transportation director, uh, has some recommendations to go with Midwest Transit. It's not the lowest. It's, I believe, the second lowest. Um, they hold up better and the wear and tear we have on our back roads and so forth. So, both of the buses are under the budgeted amount in the bond. I think by about $17,000. Um, some of that 17 would be used to help buy the cameras that need to be replaced or any upgrades, but they're still under the budgeted amount that we put in the bond application.
Okay, there's a sample resolution?
Motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the purchase of two school buses from Midwest Transit for a total not to exceed $182,710 as outlined in the attached documentation. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the 2020 school building and site bond series one is authorized.
Support.
I heard Sherry. It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Kyle?
Hi.
Sherry?
Hi.
Sandy?
Hi.
Jessica?
Hi.
Angela?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
I vote aye, motion carries. Next, moving on to our budget discussion for fiscal year 2020, 2021.
Okay, we have been talking about the budget, um, our first budget meeting. We were in a very different place on March 9th than we are almost, uh, a month and a half later. Um, last meeting, we, we had talked about the challenges that we were facing and we need to really look at, um, as board member Pacito mentioned, that the state is anticipating there is a shortfall. So this will be the first time in several years that we are potentially looking at a budget or a per pupil cut rather than, uh, an increase. So, what I'm going to present to you tonight is the big picture of what we have talked about, uh, with some scenarios, whether it's a, $300 per pupil cut or, uh, whatever the number is. And you'll see that they'll allow the board to look at the items that are listed there. And at some point in this process, we will, I will mean to look, I will be looking for direction from you to say either that can stay on or that's going to come off. And so I put dollar values out there. I did not put any wholesale budget cuts on there. In other words, I did not wholeheartedly just eliminate transportation or eliminate, uh, athletics. You know, that is an option as a board you could consider. I would not recommend it, um, because we will lose more kids than projected. So let me share my screen here for you. Give me a second, share. And you should see a graphic that looks like eliminate an expense, add a new expense. Everybody see that? Okay, um, as we're going through this, this is just a quick reference. When you're seeing numbers that are in parentheses negative, those are things we're adding to the budget. Those are new expense items. So we want to get at least a balanced budget. Ideally, if we have more revenue than expenses, that helps the situation. But we need to be at least a balanced budget. And to get to be a balanced budget, you, you as a board have the option to use a portion of your fund balance savings account to, to plug any holes that are missing. But typically, we start with the process of trying to make sure our expenses equal our revenue. So as we go through this and you see the, the, the numbers in red or in parentheses, we're moving away from a balanced budget. There, it's moving this way down the line. As you see items that are listed in black or I'm gonna call it positive number, we are eliminating that expense and taking it out of the budget. So we're, if we're down here and we see those, like, those items that are positive black, we're moving this way to get closer to that balanced budget. So with that, let me pull up this here. Do you see this chart here, the Excel sheet?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so what I have in front of us is a, a mock-up that this is the, this is the, the document we've used in the last six years. And, and I'm just going to go through some of the tabs you can see, but we use it when I look at the projected enrollment, which this should look familiar to you in terms of we look at our February count, our October count. We take a 90-10 blend and we see how many students, um, less we are. Gives us a per pupil allocation amount, et cetera. So what I do then is I take that, that per pupil, which is, which is up here. This is what we're projecting to be down based on just moving students up, assuming 105 kindergarteners and assuming the same number of ECS students. So when you take that per pupil, and what I'm going to focus tonight on is I want to be able to prepare, um, what I believe would be worst case scenario. As a board, you obviously can make the decision whether you want to do a 200, 300, 400, 500, or $600 per pupil cut. If you recall, uh, on March 9th, we were talking around 240 increase. So if I were to put 240, you can see on there how that totally changes and shifts the, the, the dynamics. But I think we need to at least consider, and I'm gonna, um, between a 5 and 660. Here's the rationale or the reason why. For the M S, Michigan School Business Officials, they're recommending districts plan for a $500 per pupil cut. If you take the billion short, which has been out there, it hasn't been official yet from the state. Um, when you divide the number of per pupils that attend Michigan schools, that's about a $660 per pupil cut. There are districts that are taking the stance that they're budgeting from their 2008 per pupil allocation. So for Richmond, that would be a 900 and I believe $930 per pupil cut.
Brian?
Yes.
Brian, I'm sorry. Can, is, can we ask questions?
Absolutely. You have to ask questions throughout the process as I'm going over.
All right. So when you're talking, districts are looking at 2008 because that was, that was when the really big cut hit at that time? That's what they're going back and looking at?
There's a variety of reasons, but, but yes, for, for, that was when there was a, a freeze in per pupil allocation. There were several years we've got, we got nothing. We, we, um, 2000, forgive me, it's either nine, 10 or 11, we had the 470 cut mid-year and we've been slowly working our way back.
Okay.
So, um, my recommendation is a starting point, and I think board member Pacito, um, was correct in, in what she said in terms of, I'm not asking the board to make any final decisions at this point.
Right.
Other than, um, look at the information, begin thinking so that when we get that number around the May 15th, whether it's $300, whether it's 660, the decisions are going to be, um, easier. They're still going to be difficult, but it will be easier to begin putting things back that we might have considered to have, to eliminate. So when you look at this, so I'm going to hide these just for the sake of having less, uh, fewer things on the screen. And if we look at this scenario here, uh, 660, and I'll stick on the last column, a 660 per people cut. So basically we're taking the, it's a loss of a million, over a million dollars in revenue based on our enrollment. So you basically, you see our expenses here stay the same. So I've assumed at this point, we haven't made any change to the organization. Now we're going to start looking at changes. But I did change the revenue to be this, what our current February revenue was, less the million dollars, which equates to the 14.253.
Okay.
In the previous budget, because we talked about the settlement of the R A contract, there's a, there's a cost of roughly $30,000 to the budget this year. It is my, not my, is my recommendation not to put any dollars allocated to merit pay because the student achievement data is being taken out evaluation. So that puts our structural problem at 58,000 in the negative at this point. So when you add this number plus the 58, that's our problem. The enhancement millage, um, I guess is a blessing to every district in McComb County at this point because nobody expected on March 9th to be having this conversation with any type of reduction. And I, I don't think it was on anybody's radar. But we anticipate approximately $400 per pupil, um, which equates to about 570. That could be up or down. Um, I don't have the official number that, that we, I would have gotten from the ISD, but the latest I was told was budget for 400. 400 times our per pupil allocation, which is up here, gives us about 579,000. If you recall, I've been using the numbers 575 throughout this whole process. So we're not that far off. So our structural problem on a 660 per pupil cut is 558, after we apply the new revenue, $558,000. Any questions at this point?
Brian, did, I'm sorry, did you say that you did happen to know from the M I S D what per pupil they were going with?
They, they told the superintendent it's a big budget for 400. It's probably going to be a little more than that. But once I have that final number, I can plug that in here. Um, that will show up on the taxpayers', um, tax bill this July 1.
Okay.
So for our community, they're going to have two, two.
Our M I S D budget, does that have that in there, the, the information we just got from the M I S D?
Uh, I will double check it because we have our meeting tomorrow to go over the M I S D budget and.
Okay, because I, in, in the budget, it says, as a result of the 2021 budget is based on a, as a result of the COVID, if, you know, going on, is based on a program similar to the anticipated for the current school year in taking into consideration current state fundings. So is that saying that they are taking into consideration last year's state funding for this year in their budget? Meaning that would not be a decrease in per pupil funding?
Because of the ISD and the timing, they have to approve their budget and when it has to come to the individual boards to approve it, oftentimes they don't have the per pupil foundation. So they'll approve a budget based on their best guess at what, uh, reasonable assumptions. And then they'll, then they'll amend their budget to show any changes once they have more details or staffing change, much like we do after the start of the school year.
Can I, can I interject for a second? I, I, I'm not sure where we're going in this conversation. We're not talking about what the ISD's budget is. We are talking about our budget. So I, I think.
Last year when we were doing budget discussions, I think that we did go along the same lines that the M I S D did.
Um, I don't remember whether that was the case, but, but really I think questions about the ISD budget really, we, we gotta talk about just what's happening here.
I'm just curious because we have the M A S B that I watched a webinar from today saying that we should budget for $345 per pupil. And what I got out of looking at the M I S D, it says, we should just go at what we had last year. So I'm just asking that question. I mean, maybe I'm understanding what I'm reading wrong. That's why I'm asking Brian, I guess. But that's why I'm asking.
What I'm saying is there, whatever, I don't know what M A S B, I don't know who they're experts, the information and.
Budget Office.
Even, even the ISD, it, it doesn't, what, the ISD can't suggest to us what we do with respect to our budget. Their budget is really completely different. And even with respect to the enhancement millage, they don't get any of those dollars. So if the ISD, if, and I haven't looked at that document, you've already looked at it obviously, but if they're talking about telling us what they recommend we should do to our budget, I don't really need that information. I want to look at, just focus right here, right now on this. And then as we move along, we get more information from the state come May on what we are getting or not getting, then that's what we got to focus on. But what the ISD recommends to us really doesn't mean, and I'm, I'm just speaking for myself. Doesn't mean anything to me. We got to focus on what we're doing here in Richmond. And that, that's what our conversation needs to focus on.
Um, I think what Angela might be saying, am I on?
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, is that the ISD is not changing their budget from this year. Like they're not, they're not going $600. They're not, they're just keeping it the same right now. Of course, they're still going to probably have to adjust. But I think what she, what I got from it is they're not changing any, they're not forecasting any, anything just yet. And I realize, you know, we can, they weren't recommending we do that, but, um, I think it's just like, why are we going all the way to the one end and they're just kind of saying, okay, we're just going to wait and watch this thing. I understand we have to realize what we may have to cut, but.
I think it's easier to add things back in than to cut them out. And to have that conversation about, uh, what the worst case scenario is. I mean, I know several people there on school boards across the state of Michigan and many of them are discussing a thousand dollars. So I don't think 660 is too far off the mark. I think it's kind of right in between, uh, the worst case scenario. You know, it, what I've heard is the worst case scenario and, um, the best case scenario would be that nothing was taken away. So I think that it's definitely easier to have that conversation about what does the worst case scenario look like? And then we can always add things back.
And, and we're not.
Process.
Yes. And we're not taking anything away, anything. It's conversation.
Today.
We have a month.
I was just pointing out there that the, that the M A S B and the M I S D seem to use, and we have looked at them as reference in the past. So that's why I brought it up. I thought it was relevant to the discussion.
And, and what you said is, right now, we don't know what were our allocations. That's the uncertainty. So we're hearing different groups, like the Michigan School Board officials, like the state representative say, okay, if she's telling you, you need at least three, what, 334 or whatever you, you said?
345 is what she was saying.
35? To me, that's our minimum.
Yeah.
That, that's, that's a given. We're not, if the state budget office is, is indicating that, we're not giving.
She said that that could be a possibility if the two grants that they're applying for through the state don't go through. But she feels that those grants will more than likely go through and we won't have an issue. We will have enough funding, at least like a zero increase maybe, maybe even an increase. But she says currently we're at, the education budget is at 500 mil, the reduction, 500 million dollar reduction, meaning $345 per pupil. But between the COVID and the CARE Act and some of those other things, and they're applying the state for, she has here 389 million for the CARES Act relief. 90% of that funding is based on Title I schools. So we should be able to see that for sure. And then the, what was it, 800 million with, uh, you know, schools that are, you know, areas with up to 500,000, greater than 500,000 population. She had that in McComb County, so that would be included. So she has here like around 800 million dollars that should be approved and then another few. So there's quite a few things that are going through that the M A S B are working out with the governor now. So she's in hopes that these will go through and then hopefully we won't see a reduction. But if they do, then we should think about $345.
Right, and that, and that, you, you're.
She said, you know, of course, that's why they don't want anybody to make a decision until the end of May.
Well, nobody makes the decision before then anyways. So I, that's.
Well, I know, but these assumptions are pretty big and I don't want to commit to, you know, reduce funding or to cutting anything at this moment. So that's.
But Angela, that's not even what this process is. We're not committing to anything. We're having a discussion.
Right. We need to give some feedback to figure out where you would like us to go with this.
Yes, not tonight.
If those numbers come, if those numbers come to fruition.
That's why we have a meeting May 11th and that's why we talked about, after the, the revenue conference on the 15th, having another meeting where we have better information. This is a process. No one's talking about doing anything or committing, we're not committing to anything. This is our process. And we have to be realistic and we have to be realistic to what is going on in Richmond and the guidance that our superintendent is giving us. Mr. Wamsley, can you unmute? Mr. Wamsley, can you unmute Kyle, please? He just texted me, he's muted.
All right. There you go, sorry.
Kyle, are you unmuted?
I am, I am. I respect everything Angela, that, the research and whatnot that you did. But, I mean, I don't know where the governor thinks he's going to get the money. And I just don't see any of it happening. So I would like to go over the worst case scenario, because I don't want to last minute be having a conversation about people's jobs and programs and all of that. I would like to have that conversation now, so we have six weeks to think on it. Because it's, I mean, it's very serious stuff. But I really, I don't see where they are. Everybody thinks they're going to get the money. I don't know, I just don't.
The only thing I would caution is on the revenue that you're getting from the federal government, which would be title. Sometimes, sometimes, there are strings attached, or it can only be used in certain ways. And obviously, we're going to use it to get as much money as we can get. And you've got Tammy's and my commitment on that one. But, you know, back in 2000, I want to say it was '07, '08, maybe '06, '07. We had what was called the ARRA funds, A-R-R-A. And forgive me, I'm drawing a blank on what the American Recovery and something Act. Where basically, they gave districts money through the state to basically supplement, because the economy was so bad at the time. So hopefully, if we're going to get dollars, it's something similar so that it softens or eliminates any potential cuts. So, all right, let me, you want me to continue?
Please.
Okay. All right, the, so again, looking at the worst case, this is where you're at. As whether it's a 500 or $660 per pupil cut. The stuff that's in the salmon color, we have talked about before. So for instance, we know with, based on the current employees right now and their current healthcare plans. We have an increase in our hard cap obligation of the district, which is about $40,000. We know that come October 1st, our retirement portion of the district's retirement cost is $77,000. So you'll see they're in red negatives, those are new expenses to the budget. We have a contract negotiation with the RAA for a second year, primarily it's financial. And I believe it's three, up to three articles. Right now, I have a zero placeholder in that. So those are the big picture off the top. Because I didn't put RA out here, because REA members, excuse me, are in multiple parts of the budget. So I'm going to start with the elementary, which is Function 111. So right now, we have budgeted 2.1 million. We have a furniture budget that was put in there this year, so I'm taking that, I'm recommending taking that out. We had that budget when we added the fifth section of kindergarten.
Excuse, Brian, when you're talking that money, that's not something that can be bond related? You know, if you take it out, that can be covered?
Currently in the bond, there is furniture allotment for the renovation. But this money, we spent in the 1920s school year, we already spent it.
Okay.
So if we carry over all of our expenses to next year, that would still be in the budget. I don't anticipate us needing to use that, which is why we're taking it out of the budget. Taking it out of the budget.
Okay.
So it's fewer expenses. We talked about with the five sections of kindergarten, and first, you're going to, if we want to keep those class sizes, we would have to add a second grade position and appropriate specials to cover the cost of adding a fifth section of kindergarten. We talked at one of our board meetings, which is, again, this is, that 86 is, is assuming a lot about, I don't know what individual that would have been. It's assuming, I may, we may hire someone who is at a master's step zero, full family. Well, that, their benefits and FICA retirement, so it may. If someone's at a bachelor's step zero, a single person, that's obviously going to come down. But that's, the technology replacement, we talked at the point about putting an investment in technology. So once the bond goes through, you have the dollars allocated in the budget every year to do technology replacing. It's about $50,000 at grade level to replace laptops. So here's an example, I'll show you that if, through this process, and let's say on May 11th or May, June 8th, you say, we're not going to budget for that technology right now. We'll put it in next year's budget or a future year. It could easily be zeroed out, and it will change our bottom line. Okay? But for the sake of this, I put everything in there. And I wanted to make sure that you saw everything that said, we're going to go through and zero. If you chose not to put that second grade position in and just have four sections of second grade, you can see in the budget, we added it here, we're taking it out here, so it's a net zero to the budget. You could choose, if we needed to, to reduce the kindergarten first grades down to four section and still be within contract language. That's, again, I took this 84, 86, 4, and just multiplied it by two. So that would be coming out of the budget.
And if you did that section, that would put classroom numbers approximately where?
We have for next year in October, if we're roughly 113, you're talking 27, probably 27, 28, 27, 28, 26, 27. Depending on the grade.
Okay.
Now, that's pretty solid FTE numbers, so.
Okay.
If you reduce staff, we have to budget unemployment cost. So our cost would be 362 times 20 weeks. In this case, if we did do the two, that's why this is indented. So you'll see a pattern throughout it. Even though you have the savings of the people, there is a new cost. Currently in the elementary, middle, and high school, we have curriculum resource dollars that we've been using over the last several years to purchase math, science, et cetera. We have an allocation sitting there, because our plan was to purchase social studies materials.
Mr. Wamsley?
Yes.
I'm sorry, can you hold on? Jessica got knocked off, please.
Okay. Stop sharing, so I can pull up the list here.
No music for us. Kyle, while we're waiting for Jessica to get back on?
Kind of feel like.
Oh, here it is, yeah.
Oh, too late.
No Eric Church for everyone.
Okay.
Let me get her unmuted here. Can you hear us now, Jessica?
Yes.
Okay, all right, we're back.
Okay.
All right, let me go back to sharing. You see the screen here?
Yeah.
Okay. So there's curriculum dollars that are allocated in each lineup. We could hold off and not purchase social studies materials. In that case, you'll see, we would take this expense out of the budget. So currently, we have money ready to budget to do that. Going into next year, this was a savings we wanted to do that would reduce it.
Is that social studies material for all grades, or just?
This is, this is, this is just elementary. You'll see a curriculum supply down here in the middle school. And you'll see one that's in the high school.
And then, when was the last time that we purchased that curriculum in the elementary for social studies?
This year's dollars we used for the literacy library with the fourth grade move over to the middle school, a good chunk of that was buying the literacy libraries materials as well as the kindergarten classroom, kindergarten first grade classroom carts for the new sections. Prior to that, we had a, we had a science adoption. We did a, we did literacy libraries in previous years. Social studies, it's been a long time since the district has updated social studies materials.
Yeah, I didn't recall us talking about that since I've been on the board, so that's why I was curious.
And the social studies officially, the standards were approved by the state board last year, so we were, I think it was June of last year. There's a lot of debate on those social studies standards, but they were officially approved of the base. So we could hold off and not purchase instructional materials. So right now, there's $60,000 that would come out of the expenses to help balance the budget. When you go to middle school, again, there's.
Brian, before you go on to middle. Well, I just, is there any kind of forecast yet about new students to the district, like, moving in? You know, just for like elementary class-wise purposes, the class sizes and all that? In case we get new enrollment?
We typically have used this projection model for the last several years. And you can see in this model, you can see we've been down in some years. We had, in the fall of 19, that October count, we were up.
Does it include all the building that's going on in the city, your model?
This is, our model, because we're a smaller district. We typically have just, we don't take into consideration birth and death rates that larger districts do. Real estate transactions, et cetera, because larger districts are dealing much more on a variance. We've typically, and it's been, other than a couple nuances, it's been pretty, within a ballpark, I would say, just moving kids up. I'll be honest with you, my bigger concern is going to be, depending on the COVID-19 and how it handles over the summer. My bigger concern is losing more kids from the perspective of those parents who do not want to send their students to a classroom that's going to have 30 kids in a classroom, or not 30, 25, 27, whatever the number is, in a classroom. We do have a group of, they may opt for homeschool. If, and I'm going to say if, that we're all assuming schools opening in August, September. You know, if it doesn't, there's potentially parents who are going to opt for an online option. So.
So we may lose students.
We may, there is, it's an unknown until they show up. Which is why I can't thank our staff enough for what they've been doing now to stay connected with our families. Because it's, it's that connectivity that's going to keep them staying here. Because they like what they've got. But I am concerned, as well as most districts in the state of Michigan, on what that fall enrollment is going to look like.
Sherri, I just, are you going along the lines of thinking, like, if numbers happen as we get closer to school, we may not have to do that, right? I mean, is that what you're hoping for?
Teachers, right, yeah. And we don't want huge class sizes, or we may have too many. That's my hope.
Right, right.
Well, and I would follow the same process we've done in the past year. As numbers get up, the principals have called, Mr. Kochen has been very, an advocate for this every year. Every day, I got a new student, we look at the numbers every day. We have, in the past, we have actually called families to confirm they're coming back before we made a decision to add a teacher prior to the start of school. So I would assume that same process is going to follow in the fall, too. If those houses build and we do get the students, then we will have to add staff. Okay? Let me just go through here. So when you look at middle school, again, here's the middle school portion of technology. Again, as, my intent in this list is not, this is what the board is going to do. The intent is to give you options to get to the bottom line of what it looks like. So if, again, you don't want to do the technology at this point, which is a legitimate reason with the bond, we can easily zero those out. This model would have a reduction of one FTE out of the middle school. Until we do the scheduling and until we do to all the factors. I don't know what, that may not be a person, that may be a reduction in schedules of many people. That could also potentially not allow us to run a seven-period day. Because it would limit the selection of students in their elective. Now, until I meet with Mr. Bartels and Mr. Burkebriner, we start flushing out the student schedules and seeing what their interests are to begin to say, okay, what staffing do we need for their interests? I, that won't come out till towards the end, when we do the final, when we do the final schedule. But if you reduce the staff member out of the middle school or up to an FTE, there's the unemployment cost that potentially is there. There's the curriculum materials. When you look at the high school, this 35, we have four students that are going to the International Academy in Macomb that we've talked about. That's a new cost that we don't have this year. Currently, we don't, we have four more kids going than currently. There's the computer replacement, that would be, if we wanted it in there, would be a new expense. The high school would be calling for a half-time reduction. So it's basically just half a full-time. That may be partial teacher schedules. Again, there would be unemployment costs, though with the half-time reduction, you wouldn't necessarily have that full amount, depending on if it was just one section the teacher was losing, or it could have been a half-time teacher. But we need at least plan for it.
Brian?
Yes.
For the IAM, you're saying we would, those four students wouldn't go?
If we don't budget this, I need to tell those families that they are not going to the IAM.
Right, but don't we have, don't we have a contract? Somehow that we're part of it and we send kids, what does that do to that?
Every year, Richmond's allocation is two slots a year. We currently do not have anybody in the senior, so we have open slots. At our maximum, we should be allocating about $70,000. Because we should have two freshmen, two sophomores, two juniors, two seniors. At our maximum, we currently, I believe, have one student, and I think that's a junior there now. So this would add the four going into next year to keep our slot, to be told, no more than eight students at the IAM. That's what our, that's what our agreement is for the number of selected.
So what does that do to that agreement? If we opted out of that?
I've never experienced that, and I'd have to explore that.
Okay.
I don't have an answer in terms of, I don't know if it's a one-time opt-out or if it now eliminates us from being part of it and they reallocate our slots. I'd have to check that out.
Okay.
And then you've got the curriculum here, so there's $60,000 in curriculum allocations that are currently in the budget that we have. Preschool, we've spent $209,000 in preschool. Preschool is a tuition base as well as a GSRP. So it's pretty much a money in, money out, is what I call it, or grants that cover it. So I didn't make any recommended reductions here, preschool, because they are pretty much a self-sufficient. In normal years, they're a self-sufficient program. We have $12,318 budgeted right now for summer school. This is the high school credit recovery. It's the fee that we pay the coordinator, FICA retirement, the fee that we pay for the online virtual licenses we pay for. That typically runs in July and August timeframe. Depending on what we're running, we may not be able to run one of those. If that's the case, we have this expense. If that's the case, we have this expense that could go away. If it's if we do this truly virtually, then the decision would be not to run it, but. But that would be a decision the board would have to make before we fill it. Typically.
Brian.
In May, yes.
If we don't run it, what does it do to students that need that? Credit recovery?
The it would push it into decision for next year or they're taking the credits in their high school. Schedule to make up a failed course. So they could still take it during the school year as a. Virtual class in the in the online program where we assign a mentor and so forth.
But it doesn't enable them to catch up? Is what I'm saying, because ultimately, that's what that is.
If if this one, yes, it would prolong their catch up a summers.
And prolong their high school career.
There is that potential, yes.
Is the cost still there for the mentor and all that, even if it's if it's during the school year?
The cost is still, we still have mentor in the budget. I did, because I need, I have to have that in order to run the state law requires students be able to take online courses. In order to take an online course, I have to assign a mentor. So the mentor budget we have this year is still in the budget or planned to be in the budget next year. I didn't add or decrease. Because until we get the schedules finalized, I don't know what that final number is, so it's an estimate that we put in in June. For next year.
So it's two separate things? I think I think I think what Sherry is asking, it's two, what what happens during the school year? Mentor, money, all of that, that's one function. This is strictly a summer school being able to make up, it doesn't affect what we do during the school year.
Correct, this is strictly summer school dollars. The the program that we run during the school year where it's either a credit recovery or it's a. Credit acceleration where we're potentially assigning a mentor. That's in a different function code, it's not in this function code.
Could we still run a a summer school program? But have the but have the students or parents, I guess, pay for it?
They pay, they do currently pay up. They pay a hundred and fifty dollars for a credit recovery, but it it does not cover the cost of the program.
Okay, so that's my question is like, what if they up, we up the cost of the of to cover the cost of the program, then we still offer the program? It would just be.
Interesting.
They would have to pay for it, kind of like the preschool program, money in, money out. So you could still offer it, but. They would pay for it, that's interesting.
The the issue you'd have, you'd have to set at what point is the minimum number of students we need in order for it to run. So in other words. Running with one student and a mentor, the cost of her, and again, I'm making this number up, could be something like five hundred dollars. Where if I had ten students and I had the one coordinator, the cost might come down to three hundred dollars a course. And again, don't quote me on those numbers because.
Right.
It you gotta define like we did in the the preschool, at what point did we reach a break even cost? With the number of kids registered, and at that point, that's the number you 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 would divide into to get your per your course cost.
But it still could be something to think about.
Yep.
As we go through this process, though, right?
Absolutely, you could, you could say we're going to raise the cost of summer school. And this is the minimum number we need, or or you could just raise it. And. That's what the cost, so it's a cost neutral to the district.
Okay.
What about discussions with another school district to do shared services with that, like, you know, you split with like a New Haven or or Maida? And one school does the summer school?
My only caution on that is when we report this, we report the teacher student linkage. And we report our teachers and the performance of our students.
Okay.
So if you're opening up, typically, we don't offer it to other outside of Richmond kids.
Oh, okay.
Potentially. We're saying our teacher is responsible for the New Haven score, we'd rather.
Oh, okay.
Or any, any different. So except through one nineteen, one twenty two, special ed is this is where you primarily have your special ed teachers. Para pros in function one twenty two, which is also your ECSE. Mrs. Lashbrook is currently reviewing all the IEPs to see if there's any type of reduction in special ed. As you get to the two hundred functions, you're not gonna see any at this point because we're still working on. Based on current IEPs and potential new IEP. The only reduction that we could potentially get out of special ed, if if it would, if we needed that reduction. Would be hours and it would basically taking the special ed para pros down from. Seven point two five hours a day down to six. Six point five, so we want to put minute for me. Six point seven five. So reduce their hours a half hour a day, we'd have to use some staggered schedule. By doing that, when you look at their total dollar value, looks like the retirement, it's about a twenty thousand dollar savings.
Brian, as we as we move along. Can we get? And when I say move along, as the six weeks come, whatever, more of what that looks like, what that? What that means, you know, that hours in the day, what that means, how it affects the student, the special ed student and whatever.
Yep, we could.
That information.
Right now, Mrs. Lashbrook and I have been working on what would that schedule look like for a para pro? So that, because we have some students that we start the para pro. Fifteen minutes prior to the start of school because they may ride the bus with certain students in and ride the bus home, so they're a longer hour than. What I'm gonna say is your traditional or regular para pro, which just is pretty much the start of school to end of school.
Okay.
One twenty five function code, there's four hundred and thirty four thousand dollars in. Budgeted expenses, that is pretty much all thirty one A dollars in Title One, that's our Title One teachers are in there, our Title One para pro. That's dollars in, dollars out, so any reduction in the revenue would automatically, we have to reduce the expenses. So I didn't make any changes there because we don't have our current Title One allocation for next year. We're assuming the same program is right now where we're at. I put this on here just as a talking point, so you can see what we spend for CTE. And forgive me, I did not print off, I sent it to the copy and I don't have it, the. The enrollment numbers for the program, I can go by memory, but this is basically what we pay in the salary FICA benefits portion for programs. So for instance, we have a, I believe, one hour of accounting. Four, two, two hour blocks for AIS, that's our contract with AIS. Our contract with TV broadcasting as well as. Culinary, criminal justice, cybersecurity. Like, for instance, many of these programs are held by one teacher, Mr. Wagner has a bunch of them because of his schedule, but. If you wanted to eliminate your CTE program, which I would not be my recommendation, this would be the dollar value that would have. The challenge of this is if you cut this program. You have to find a spot for the students. So if I'm cutting them out of CTE, I'm gonna have to add additional FTE up here, so I have a spot to put them in. So I put it on there just as a point of reference. You know, you just spent a lot of dollars renovating a culinary art, we have full sections of that. You know, I wouldn't recommend it, so you know, this would be an example that if the board tells you, no, we're not doing that. You would zero those out on on the list and the bottom line, then adjust it, but for the sake of this conversation, I'm just leaving it on here.
Can you send us those numbers, Brian?
I I will do, I'm making a list here, sending you the enrollment numbers. And you also, just as a reminder, the board, running a high school program is more costly than an elementary program. And you've got a lot of variances, you've got AP courses that run low, you've got your basic courses, which we try to. We try to keep them low, but there is, there is a lot more kids typically in those. You've got unique programs where, like, for instance. AIS and let's assume EMT are all leaving the building at a time, while our class sizes during those hours could be lower. But when they all come back to the building, I gotta put the students somewhere, so our class sizes rise, so there's a lot of variance in in scheduling with this. You could eliminate counselors. That would be cost for counselors if you wanted to under this two twelve, that's pretty much the. There's some minor supply, I mean, we're talking like five hundred dollars to supply it. Some minor mileage accounts, but it's pretty much the bulk of is benefits. Salary, FICA, retirement, benefits, et cetera. These are the two two hundreds that I talked about, that we don't have anything, though psychologically, psychological services, we typically spend about eight thousand, those are usually contracting with a psychologist. If you do IEP testing. That's gonna be a requirement, so I don't see any reduction in, that's typically what we spend. That could go up if we have a year that we have a lot of testing that requires psychologically. That could be increasing throughout the year that we're just required to do. It could go down and the opposite end, too. Speech and language, those are the the staff, that's our budget for speech and language. And you'll see social worker, we currently have three social workers, one at every building. It's important to know that of the social workers. Thirty three percent of that, their pay is paid out of the general fund. The other sixty seven percent is paid out of thirty one A. So you have, you don't have a lot in the general fund to reduce. Because there's only a total of one FTE. Our liaison officer is, for some reason, it's built in the in the budget codes, it's charged to two sixteen, so. But that is paid out of Title Four, so we pay for our liaison officer out of our Title Four, which is a security grant. So it doesn't come out of general fund, we charge his salary to the grant. So if you eliminated the liaison, you're not saving anything in the general fund. But you free up the grant dollars to be reallocated for something else. Again, there's a teaching consultant. Cost, again, this is what Mrs. Lashbrook is working on, these areas here based on current IEPs. I'll be honest with you, I don't see, based on current IEPs, assuming those students are coming back. Much change, if any, in this section. And we're we're pretty tight with our special ed allocation. Two nineteen is for schedule Bs. Which is the academic part of it. If you wanted to eliminate all schedule Bs for elementary, middle and high school, you can see the dollar value. This is payroll, FICA and retirement, again, for every dollar, we're paying basically forty nine, forty seven, forty nine cents in FICA and retirement. The K twelve theater program, that's all the positions that are within them, that's the dollars you can see on there. If you do want to eliminate those programs, those are, that's what you would save right now.
Brian, with those academic, those schedule B academics for the three buildings. Can just, can you just refresh us and get us information on exactly what those are? And the amount of kids that are involved in those programs this school year? Please.
And academic, and you want what they are and how many kids?
Yes.
But I will get you that list so you have it, but just as a talking point, it's it's all your clubs that are.
Right.
National Honor Society. But I'll get you that list, I'll get you that list.
Yeah, just I, I don't know about anybody else, but I would just like to have it in front of me as I'm going through this process myself, I'd like to just see it.
Absolutely. Two twenty one is improvement of instruction, these are Title Two, which is where we do our our professional development and our GSRP. Again, these are all grant dollars, so there's really no reduction there. Two twenty one, media specialist. We have three media specialists, they basically work seven hours and twenty five minutes roughly a day. This would be reducing their schedules down to about six hours a day. Again, I can give you the same thing schedule, what that might look like. For not only the para pros, but I I'm assuming you're gonna want them for this, too, but I can.
Yes, I do.
There's not much, there's not much dollar, there's not many dollars in there to allocate other than people. In two twenty five, we bought computer tables in the nineteen twenty school year for the middle school's third. Computer lab, as well as we bought some tables. With a high school computer lab, we expanded that third one. We, this plan would not carry that expense over, so that could be something that could come out of the budget and doesn't affect anything. Two twenty six is a contract obligation currently to add a position of a curriculum. Some type of curriculum director combination. Again, that's a ballpark cost that was in there based on a range of salary, FICA retirement and a full family package. So that would be an increase in expenses.
Was, why does it say contract obligation?
Because in the contract, my contract, it says beginning July first, that position comes back. So what we would do is if the if the board wanted to consider not having that position, we have to sit down and negotiate that contract differently. That's why.
Okay, I thought it was just a, it wasn't in, it was still a based on affordability, if we could afford it, not a for sure thing. That was my understanding.
No, it's in this contract.
The FTE is what we discuss, would have to discuss. Which would be, when I say FT is the full time, part time. As positions. That's usually based on the the. The budget, so. But I, the reason why it's on there is everything that we have a contract obligation for, I put on here.
Right, and red.
If if, or or it's a new expense, if it's. If I'm going back, in this case, it's kind of unique because it's mine, but if I, if there was another contract obligation with another bargaining unit. That you, I went back to say, hey, could we waive this or something? I'd have to go back and get them to agree on that and then bring it back to the board for you guys to agree on it. But right now, based on the current contract. That's an expense that we would have, it's the same thing when you look at the the, any of the media title, well, not Title One, because it's money in, money out. Media or special ed, the para pro can have a contract for another, I think it's two years on their their contract. So any raises that are currently in their contract are now reflected in. In in the cost of the contract, so we have to honor those those contracts.
I guess I just misunderstood that it was still an item to be talked about, like considered, based on affordability. So is there, I haven't been able to see your, the newest contract is not online, your contract.
The one from December?
Yeah.
Okay, I will, I will do it with Jamie tomorrow or Wednesday, we'll make sure we get it uploaded.
Okay.
Not realize it wasn't there, thanks for bringing that to my attention.
You saw it when we, when we did it.
Yeah, I know, I just, I guess I didn't understand.
Just making sure.
That it was a for sure addition back into the budget when and when it happened.
The two twenty seven is our portion of NWA, typically it costs more than that, but we've been reimbursed in the past, the state has given us a reimbursement. And this past year, we've gotten some discounts from the ISD, so. We have to, according to state, have a progress monitoring tool. And in many of the the buildings, this is what we use, so that's our cost, that's why I did not do any reduction because we'd have to put something else in place. Under two thirty two, it's the Board of Education's budget, as I look at them based on. The current expenses and. We have it, we have a advertising budget that we do, and there's certain advertising we have to like for school of choice and newspapers and. And so we could reduce that budget over the last couple of years, we have increased that budget trying to be able to draw, with the potential of drawing more students. This is a third of the advertising, so it's currently at thirty, we bring it down to ten. We did not spend thirty this year, just so you know, that was the line item that we had budgeted. So this would bring the line item down to twenty thousand. I added this one and I put it in green or excuse me, in in the the salmon color because it deals with the election. We had, we had contracted with a company to help us with the informational campaign on the the election. This was the portion that we paid after July one. So obviously, we're not playing, holding an election that was for the bond, so that expense could come out of the budget. So. It would bring right, this item would bring down the board's uh, line item to roughly uh, seventy-two minus. Six, seventy-six, seventy-five, thirty-four, thirty-four thousand-ish.
Um, and just to, just to point out for those in the viewing audience, um, that that Board of Education, that line item. Um, you know, the eighty-two nine, board members don't get paid um, to serve and none of that money. Goes to board members, if you will, but so everyone knows, I asked Brian and and he talks about the ten thousand. In the budget for advertising, but I'd like a, a complete breakdown of what that eighty-two nine. Looks like to see if there's other ways besides just the ten thousand dollars in advertising that can come down from there.
I do have Tammy that I did ask her to prepare that. So if you wanna get her to go over it right now and they get it in paper copy to you. You can see, you can see kind of the big picture.
Well, you know what? Just, just add it to, I mean, well, Chris's question and different people's stuff that, and I've asked questions, you can just add it there. To us to look at for two weeks from now, please.
Okay. Um, we'll do. The um. Twenty-six thousand of that is the audit, so that's a big chunk of it. You have to, you have by law do that.
No, but I I just want that information out there.
Yep, I'll get it. Um, and we'll get it. Two thirty-two is primarily the executive office, which is my office. We had in there at the beginning of the year, temporary services for our pupil accounting. Um, that would be dollars that would come out of, of. Um, my office uh, in in that aspect of it. In. Two forty-one is the office of principal, which includes principals and secretaries. Uh, we had temporary services for Mrs. Mashon prior to, we had an administrator that was out and she filled in. Um, during that time when you add her FICA benefits or FICA, um, and what we were required to pay and payroll, the total of about fourteen thousand dollars. We have an obligation of a, of a increase in contract obligation, which would be seventeen thousand three, which we talked about previously. I did not add anything to the secretarial at this point. Uh, I put it under this section because this is where it would fall. But their contract does expire June thirtieth, um, so we would be set to negotiate with them relatively soon. And if there's any change in their contract that would cost us money, we'd have to budget for it. This is an option for the board to consider. It could be an induction of one administrator, which would be on average, the average cost is one fifty-two. Again, you'd have unemployment costs backed out of there that we'd have to create, um, or actually have to pay. I have not even begun to formulate what that would look like at this point. Uh, if the board is, is interested in that, I'd have to be, here are some options. Um, that we, we would have to um, consider if that's, if that's something you're interested in in pursuing when we look at the bottom line of where we're at. Reduction of secretarial hours would be uh, basically a half hour off the day of each secretary at the building. Um, so they work seven point, seven point five hours a day rather than eight. And we'd have to stagger that, but I could also, I'm assuming you're gonna wanna schedule similar to the pair of pros. Again, it would be a, a, a rough schedule of what it would look like. Currently, they, if they, they work seven to three. Um, or seven, well, I mean, you could say seven thirty to three thirty. There are some difference. Some are seven fifteen to three fifteen. Uh, we would adjust the half hour a little on the beginning and the end of the day. But I can get you a draft of a schedule that what it might look like. Each building does it a little different with the hours and when they need the additional support. Um, so it may, it may vary by building.
Well, I would think, I would think we would want, just like the questions we've been asking before with respect to the administrative reduction. I think on more information on what that, what that looks like.
Yep. Uh, fiscal services, um, we have temporary services that were, were budgeted for if we had people out. That were uh, to begin, continue processing payroll. Uh, not this year, but the previous year, we had uh, a new payroll person. Uh, we went at the beginning of the year with. Payroll vacancies. We had some temporary people. When we built the budget this year, we kept some of that in there, not knowing what we were gonna need. With the bond. Uh, but right now, everything goes to AUC. We issue the contract to AUC and then AUC turns around and issues the contract. So all the legwork and paperwork that we were projecting to have to do. With our previous construction manager, Hendrick Construction. A lot of that paperwork, we're not doing because it's done by our construction manager and we're paying them to do it. So that's where that reduction comes out of there. Two fifty-nine uh, is election costs. We had budgeted ten thousand dollars. I think we spent a little, around nine thousand of that. Um, so again, we wouldn't put that budget in the, in the budget for the FY twenty-one. Operations, this is our custodial contract and our maintenance. Uh, it's the maintenance contract with metro controls for the preventative and uh, maintenance, um. Just the care of the, our equipment. Uh, it's the contract with HD Burton for the um. All the uh, chemical treatments that we do for our, our systems, uh, its supplies that we purchase for repairs. Um, it's any special contract, like we had two major toy, uh, sewage line backups that we had to to run. Those are pretty costly. It would all come out of this operations budget. In this aspect here. Two two, two sixty-six is part of the Title Four security. So the, the Title Four grant dealt with some signage as well as the liaison officer. So there's, it's basically money in, money out in the grant. Pupil accounting, excuse me, pupil accounting, pupil transportation. Uh, we can re- remove this thirty-seven thousand dollars. That was our part of the, when the bond or the bus was in an accident last school year. Um, after the settlement with insurance, we had to pay thirty-seven thousand dollars for that. That can come out. This is another example of at some point, the board needs to put money aside for bus replacement. Because we have it in the bond, this would be something I, I would recommend if we need to hold off a couple of years to do, but at some point. When the bond dollars run out, you'll need to start adding money to the budget uh, for a bus. A bus, depending on when you bid them, costs about a hundred thousand. In our case, we got it a little cheaper, um, but they're about a hundred thousand dollars. F uh, function code two eighty-two, community services is GSRP marketing. That's grant dollars. Two eighty-three, we could save two thousand dollars this year and about another thousand dollars in FY twenty-two. If we switch from the absent management system, we currently use frontline to a system called Red Rover. Very similar features. Um, the look is a little different, but we could save two thousand dollars in our subscription costs each year. The eighteen thousand for support services are licenses to the MISD for um, the systems we use like Power School, TineN. So that's our license cost. I would not recommend um, not having that because we'd have to purchase our own system and it would cost us more than what we're paying on a license. Two ninety-three, um, you, we currently pay about three thirty thousand dollars in assistant coaching positions. Um, this, this i- item would be keep all of our same athletic programs. It would just reduce the number of assistant coaches available. Um, that we would pay out of district funds. It's basically a two-thirds reduction. Again, I don't have, I can give you a list of who, what assistant coaches we have. But I would look with, work with Mr. Reinhardt to see if this was an item that the board did a vote on to see where. What programs do we have the most kids that are gonna need the most supervision? Or, or uniquenesses for the program.
Brian, could you also give us a breakdown of what each sport costs?
Are you talking the, the personnel cost on that?
Um, everything that's included in, in the four hundred and eighty-three thousand dollar line item. You know, at equipment, everything that for each sport, including salary and equipment.
I can give you by sport, the payroll cost. We have just a general supply dollar. That is allocated that Mr. Reinhardt uses for any sport as they need it. It's not broken down by sport, but I can give you. I'll give you all the payroll cost by sport and then I'll give you the other items that are charged to that. But there's a portion of secretaries that are charged to that and uh, Mr. Reinhardt obviously is charged to that too.
Okay.
Three thirty-one is community service. These are all Title One grants. These are our community involvement that we're required to do for the grant, so there's no reduction there. Three fifty-one, uh, childcare is a self-sustaining program, so I didn't make any changes there. That fluctuates every year based on how many kids are in the program. In some years, we haven't had to add staff. This year, we've had to add staff on some days uh, because we've had more kids utilizing childcare than we've had in previous years. So. I didn't recommend any, any change in the reduction uh, with the assumption we're still running child. Three sixty-one is welfare activities. This is where we have, we have to, by Title One regulations, set aside a dollar amount to help homeless students. Um, and so that's the allocation we set aside just to help Mrs. Lara Tonin and the social workers primarily oversee that one. Uh, with Mrs. Lashbrook, but it's um, it, it might be getting a homeless student gas cards to get from point A to point B. It might be buying books, scapping gowns if there's students considered homeless, uh, and so forth. Three seventy-one is all our non-public schools, St. A's, St. Pete's. What we're required to provide them through IDEA, special ed, their Title One allocation, that should be Title Two, not eleven. Title Two allocation, which is staff development and Title Five, which is security and enrichment programs. Um, that's their allocation, so we can't reduce that. Um, five, uh, function code four fifty-two, this was the GSRP. We purchased playground equipment for the zero to five playground. Um, that expense more than likely will go away this year, but it will be reallocated how the grant is paid. So there's, you're not saving anything. It's just gonna be reallocated. It might go into supplies. It might go into professional development. Might go into curriculum. It might go into staffing costs. Function code four fifty-six, uh, we currently have an expense of thirty-one thousand dollars, which was uh, primarily the. A lot of asbestos abatement when we did the school of restore renovations as well as some of the infrastructure or the cost of that program. So that will come out of, that does not need to be budgeted again for next year. So that could come out of the budget. And then we had talked when we did the bond about allocating a certain dollar value into the turf replacement. Uh, if you looked at it, it's about. Eight hundred thousand dollars uh, to replace it in about ten years. Um, which would mean you need to set aside about eighty thousand dollars a year. This would be a new expense. As a board, like I said, you could, you could choose to hold off that. You can use your part of it or you can say, okay, we're gonna start putting that aside. Because we're gonna have to have a future board's gonna have to have dollars to replace that turf. And that should be turf, not cars, truths. Um, you could allocate a certain portion of fund balance. Which I left blank because you, you have that ability. So when you look at this list right now, if you implemented everything on that list with a six hundred and sixty dollar per pupil cut. We've cut too much. We don't need to cut that much. So you can start putting things back. So for instance, if, if you wanted to keep the CTE program, I'll just use that example, we could zero that out. And that bottom line will change that. Any questions at this point? Okay. Let me show you this part here, and this is what Tammy and I are still working on because we're waiting for some bills to come in. So that we can make a, a, the best estimate we can. We know our, the budget that we built for FY twenty assumed that we were gonna have so, a certain amount of childcare revenue. As an income. Well, with the school closure, we've lost that income. So we're figuring out right now what that loss is. We don't have that dollar value as of today. Cause the way bills have been issued in the final, we're still, we're still working through that. We know we're, we have a loss of an income because our spring sports, we did not collect pay to participate. So there's gonna be a loss of an income for this year.
Brian, won't, they're also, I mean, we're not paying like referees or officials or anything either.
Correct. So, yeah, so there'll be a sports, um, and that's what we're just verifying that everything's been paid for winter. And, well, of, fall should be done, but winter sports should be, should be done. So then we can get a better estimate for the savings and I, I will add sports or athletics as a line item on there. Um, we know running the bill, buildings in unoccupied mode, which is what we've been doing since March sixteenth. We have a savings on our utilities. Those are the bills that we're waiting to see, okay, we should be getting March bills around this time now, so we can see how much a half a month. Compared to what we paid in the previous year. So we're gonna have money that is gonna be left unspent. Now, I'm not suggesting we reduce the budget for utilities for next year. This is kind of a one-time savings that's gonna potentially roll up to fund balance at the end of this year. Which when we get this net result. You could allocate the money that goes into fund balance, comes right back out next year and you put in this line item right here. So the expenses we didn't incur this year, just have that come out of fund balance for next year. We know we're gonna have a fuel savings for buses, not running our fleet. What we're backing out now is the buses we're running for the uh, food service program, which that fuel we're charging to the food service account rather than our operation.
Okay.
We know we're gonna have a savings in substitute costs and I just put the three areas, elementary, middle and high school. Because we have teachers obviously not taking absences now that require a substitute. And I'm not talking about the substitutes that are paid out of, out of grant dollar. These would be subs that would be paid out of general fund. So. It's the allocation we give for personal business days, sick days, the stuff that we're obligated to pay out of the general fund. And the last big ticket item that we've identified is we have some unspent supplies. And textbook accounts that we would, we did not spend between now and the end of the year. That we typically spend or or pay out. The one thing I'm, I'm gonna add it and it's uh, is the postage. Our postage has gone up from what we budgeted. So that will be an expense that's in this year's budget, larger than what we budgeted because of the online or the virtual. Um, schooling that we've been providing. So this dollar, once, once these are finalized, you're, we will have a dollar number that we anticipate at the end of the year. Will roll up to our fund balance. And again, that's a dollar value you could easily use as a one-time fund balance purchase, or you could allocate more dollars out of the fund balance. Questions? And I, I will make sure the board has this one as of today, the one that's been presented. Because there might have been some tweaks as we've been working through this, even after we uploaded the board packet. We've been, we've been looking at every account number, trying to figure out what dollars we can add. Um, that are, are gonna be savings this year, but we need to make sure they're in the budget for next year. And over the past couple of years, we've already reduced our utility costs and fuel. You know, if you got a, a really warm or cold winter, that's gonna go up. If gas prices continue to fall, our fuel costs for next year are gonna be down.
Brian, I have a question.
Brian, I have a question on, under the elementary school for 111. I think this is where I asked you guys earlier, but, uh, it says additional specials, 10,000. What are those specials?
That would be adding this section that I would need to add to a teacher's schedule for this teacher. So it would be having, instead of just four sections of second grade, I'd have five sections of art, music, gym, steam, computers.
Okay, thank you.
Because tho- those specials teachers right now, their schedule allows them to teach fourth and fifth and some sixth grade classes at the middle school. I would have to pull the sixth grade out of their schedule to pick up the second grade additional section there.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Wamsley, I wanted to let board member Zubi know that the superintendent's contract is online. It's under the superintendent's information, not necessarily under the collective bargaining agreements, just so that she knows where to find it.
Where?
It's under, um, superintendent's information.
Where we get our packet? Okay, I thought, I looked there and mine is not updated.
I, I will, I will make sure that December 1 is in the transparency report as well as in, on the board packet. I will, I will check all of it.
But I'll look again, but I looked there a couple of times.
So the, again, the purpose tonight is not that I am recommending these. They are items you need to think about as a board.
Brian, if you want, you can take your screen down, I think.
Okay, I can pop it back.
Is everybody good if he does that? We can, okay.
So again, the purpose is not that I am recommending, these are the cuts you need to make and we're, we're done and over. These are ideas that, to help get to a point where if on May 15, it's announced that it's a 660, or maybe as, uh, Angela, you mentioned, maybe it's only 340. Then you put, or I, I don't remember what you said, but 340. If I put 340 in there and you go to the bottom line, you got a lot of stuff that you could easily put back that you don't need to cut, you're not forced to cut.
Right.
And so that's really because from the May 15 to June 8, this is where we finalize the budget for an approval at the end of June, there's not a lot of time. So I wanted you to start thinking about, these are possible options.
And if, Brian, all the questions that we had and, and asking you to get us more information, the idea then would be to get that and at our meeting on the 11th, to be able to get whatever questions we have based on all this additional information, correct?
Correct, and on the 11th, I'm not looking even at that point for you to make any final decisions on the 11th.
Right, but we could have more questions based on everything.
You're absolutely right. You could have, um, like the, the cost of the athletics, you want to see it. Those might generate other questions as you're looking at. But I want to at least get, um, a framework built so that if, if, and I pray as every Sunday, or that it's not, but if it is that 660, where, where, what do you want to put back or what, what more do you want to cut to balance it?
Okay.
And the reality is that we're at, in this process, we're a people organization. Every one of these line items, you can identify with a person. And that's, that's the reality that we're facing. There's no, there's no big ticket dollar item that says there's a count that has whatever our problem is, just sitting there waiting to be cut. It's, we're, we haven't been there for years.
Um, so just going back to the information that we asked you about, so, um, it's a whole lot of stuff. When do you think we could expect that we would get maybe some of the answers started coming that we can look at it?
Some, some of these items I have already, it's just I just got to send you the, like the Schedule Bs for what are those academic? I already have that, it's done, it shows their costs, um, it shows what we're currently paying, it's over. The athletics, um, I can easily take that in Excel and sort it by sport and just add into it the other components that are in that function code that aren't broken down by sport. Um, I know Tammy, Tammy's got the boards section already done, um, so we can, we can easily get some of this to you ahead of time so that we can, you have it so we can just review it on the 11th.
Right, everyone, I mean, the sooner we can get as much information we can, the better, right?
Right.
Right.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Brian. Anybody else have anything they want to add on that? Is that a big fat no? Okay, then that is it. We are adjourned at 9:44. Good evening, everyone, and, um, see your faces in a few weeks.